Hey, welcome back everybody. It's time to catch up with the Rad life. Our resident raconteur, our community storyteller. It's today he starts a special series highlighting the local people running for local offices. Why, what they hope to accomplish. And give us all a better idea of what's really happening in our community from the man who's out and about all the time, Rad Gantos.
Are you saying, why are we doing the show focusing on candidates or why are the candidates running?
They're all the same, aren't they?
Which we will ask that question. We're gonna ask that question. Well, I mean, no, it's because, and by the way, to correct the record, no, we started last week. Wednesday with Mayor John Stevens, who is Mayor of Costa Mesa, and he's running for reelection.
So the pressure's off today.
Yeah, so, so yeah, don't don't throw Angela like this into the fray, but no, um, the reason why we do it, and we mentioned it last time when we had, when we had John on is, you know, we, you'd have to be like asleep, ribbing winkles style.
Is there election going on right now?
To not know that we are dealing with a whole bunch of weird stuff going on.
Crazy.
And it's just crazy, right? And so I hats off regardless, you know, and we'll have, we'll have people that I agree with, I don't disagree with, I don't agree with on some things that are really on the show. Because I think we need to continue to have conversations. We've kind of lost the ability to have conversations even if we're on opposing sides of things. And when we do that, we lose the possibility of coming up with some consensus or, you know, if we're not talking, then we're done, right?
And you know, I don't know how to vote for local elections because they don't put an R and a D after their name. So if there isn't an R and a D in half of these things, I don't know how to vote.
Yes, and that is part of the problem. Paul is part of the problem. So, so, but, but that being aside, because when we're talking about city council, technically it's supposed to be nonpartisan, technically. But, 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 but we all know, right?
That's not what happens when I knock on doors.
Exactly. And, and that's just the reality. I mean, I don't remember that, you know, other than on paper being, you don't have to declare when you're filling out. But the, the reason why we're doing these and the reason why we'll ask the question is because I want to know in this current environment, what makes somebody want to run, right? And hats off to anybody who does regardless what, what they, what side of the things they stand on. Because to be especially in this fraught environment, a person that's willing to step up and be of public service for the common good as whatever way you define common good.
And instantly be attacked for whatever you say.
Hats off to you. Yeah, exactly. I mean, you're knocking on doors and you're already getting it, right?
Yep.
So, so with that, without further ado, Angela, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, um, I mean, I have a vested interest because you're in my hometown. And even though we are, you're not in, we just, for those who don't know, San Clemente got, we approved the districting map. And so this is our first election cycle where we, that we are actually now, I think it's two districts that are.
Yep, two that are up for reelection.
For reelection. So we're, we now are going to be voting for the first time in San Clemente on a, with a district map. And I know some other cities have had that. Um, I really would love to hear from anybody who lives in cities where they remember when it wasn't and when it, when it became and what is their, um, you know, what's their feedback on, on, on it? Do they like it now? Was there initial hesitation? Was all gung ho, let's do it? Uh, because we're, we're, this is our first time.
And can I make one suggestion then, since it's the first time? Let's identify her whole name and what she's running for.
Well, I was, I was, I was about, I was about to do that.
I'm here.
I was about to do that and actually have her basically introduce herself. So without further ado, Angela Watts, thanks for being here. I really appreciate you taking the time. And why don't you tell people about yourself?
Yeah.
And why you're running.
Okay.
And what you're running for.
Yeah, so I'm Angela Watts. I'm running for San Clemente City Council District Three. Um, so.
Which is where exactly?
So District Three goes from basically just around the pier, so two blocks south of the pier, down all the way, um, north towards Shore Cliffs. So the end of San Clemente heading into Dana Point.
So it's most, it's mostly the coastal part and then kind of a little bit inland towards Shore Cliffs. Okay.
Um, and so, I mean, a little bit about me, I'm a mom of two young kids. Um, I'm a small business owner. So the first, um, you know, what everyone loves to hear about me, like I've had a lot of accomplishments in my life um, with my business, but you know, I've been on Forbes, I've been on New York Times.
What, what is your business? No, I'm really intrigued.
It's called Slide Handboards. That's our first business and that was on Shark Tank. I got investment from Mark Cuban and Ashton Kutcher. Um, and that slide is what brought me and my husband to San Clemente. We started it down in Venice Beach. And about eight years ago, we were always coming to San Clemente for all of our surf, um, materials. Steve used to hand make the boards. And so we were here all the time. And then we're like, oh, we wanted to raise a family. We're like, there's no better place than to settle down.
There's a slight difference between Venice and San Clemente.
Well, there, there is, but the lifestyle of, when I met my husband, he didn't have a car. Like he was just bike riding everywhere, skateboarding everywhere and living the surf life. And San Clemente has that too, um, but also safe for families and you know, it's still family oriented.
It's not the circus at Venice Beach, Muscle Beach and all that stuff.
Yes, not the circus.
And, and give, give the website again, Angela, because I think it's a very interesting product. And for those of people who are not familiar with it, go check it out, including you, Paul, once you get out of the fridge.
Yeah, yeah. It's called Slide Handboards, S L Y D E. But in so from that.
A handboard meaning what?
It's, it goes on your hand. It gives you extra, um, speed and lift while you're body surfing the wave. Yeah, yeah. It's super fun. Um, and with that, with Mark and Ashton, we actually created multiple e-commerce businesses. One was a shoe brand that.
Can we get Mark or Ashton Kutcher on the show here?
Maybe, but they're pretty busy. They are really great partners.
So you're, you're saying what other brands, shoe brand?
A shoe brand. We built and sold that one within, you know, to multimillion dollar company. Sold it within a couple of years. A home goods company. So in that I have a lot of business experience. I was the CEO of all the, our companies. My husband does all the design and marketing. Um, but I, I handled all financials, customer service, dealing with investors. Um, and so that's just my business background. Um, but what got me here, like definitely never expected to run for any office and like.
And how long have you been in San Clemente?
Eight years now. So actually maybe a little longer. My daughter's almost eight. So we moved over here just before she was born. Um, we had our first warehouse in San Clemente in Talega where we're shipping out all of our orders. Um, we had a office space in, um, Old Town Plaza, just down, down in, um, District Three.
Yeah.
And so, you know, for running for political office is just really not, never something that ever came into my mind.
Okay, so what made you consider it?
Um, my, my kids, my daughter. I, my daughter goes to school called Las Palmas. It's a Spanish immersion program. It's the, one of the best schools, if not the best elementary school in our district.
Original school in, in, in San Clemente.
I mean, it's, we have waiting lists. It's an amazing school. We, um, dumped our entire life savings when we sold our business. We put everything into buying our first home in San Clemente, just down the road from Las Palmas because we knew we were invested in the school and my daughter going there. And then I also have a two and a half year old as well. Well, um, within the first, um, my daughter's first year when she was in kindergarten, we, she had our first lockdown. And it was, you know, imagine just going to pick up your, your kid from school and the entire block is on lockdown. I'm, I show up. There's cops everywhere. They turn you around and they're like, you can't get your kid. We're looking for a guy with a gun. And it's scary state of your life. Um, there's, there were fences that were up to my waist, like gaping holes in the fences. The school just wasn't secure. Um, I turned that into action. I started a citywide petition um, for proper security around the school with fencing. And then I started the Las Palmas Safety Committee. Um, through that, um, as I was, you know, working on the safety committee, we had two more lockdowns at the school. Now, if you don't know where the school is, it's right across the street from Maxberg Park.
Which is the main plaza park from way back in 1925. And there's a church next door, which is, was San Clemente Church. And it's a residential area around the school, right? And, and I think it backs up. Isn't that Buena Vista on the backside kind of? Yeah. So, so yes, it's in it and, and that park is literally riding across from the school.
Yeah. And you know what has happened at that park?
Yeah.
Yeah. So a lot of safety concerns. We've had shootings there. Just a couple of months ago, we had a stabbing there. And this is stuff that's happened during the day, right? Like a shooting happened broad daylight, um, stabbing happened at like six o'clock at night. Um, where kids, you know, or just, you know, we had kids at the summer school when the shooting happened, things like that. It's just, you know, things that need to be addressed.
Can I ask you a question? I don't live in the area. So why has that park deteriorated? Is it because homeless people have moved in or a lower criminal element hanging around?
It's always had.
Run down or what?
It's always had an issue. Um, I, San Clemente isn't really like, you can't really zone it. There's overlap in a lot of areas. You go one street down this way, one street down that way, and it changes nature. I think if I had to guess, that is an open space. It's the largest open space in the center of town. Like you don't have that open space. The closest thing to it would be maybe the green belt area in front of the, the community center on Del Mar. But that's not really like central and you have to go all the way down and it's really visible, like the streets across it. Maxberg Park is probably the only open space in town.
One of the open spaces.
That has access and proximity to the freeway.
Places where people can hide.
Exactly.
Cause I don't picture San Clemente is having rundown, beat up, drug infested.
You wouldn't picture it as a place that have gangs, right? But San Juan Capistrano in San Clemente have known gangs and this is where.
Places to gather, people are gonna do drugs, any kind of transactions, like, and it's proximity to the freeway. It's very close to the freeway, like literally across from, uh, Alcume Real and boom, you're on the five. So that's also the other thing. It's the access, but it's always had issues.
Yes.
Yeah, it's always, it's always had issues.
I mean, I talked to the police chief and he's like, well, we've had gangs since 1960, you know, in, to me, that's not okay, but okay. Um, so.
But that's where your fresh eyes, and we talked about this a little bit before we went on the air, you know, I've been in San Clemente since eighty seven. You know, that's almost what thirty years, almost. So, so, you know, and, and there are things that are constant. And I'm talking, there's things that are constants from nineteen twenty-five. Like if you look at some of the city council minute meetings, um, uh, you know, uh, you will see, you go, okay, change the name, change the, change the thing. It's the same issue, right? Which I'm, I'm sure a lot of cities have that, but in San Clemente, you know, that, that, that need for fresh eyes is something that also I think a lot of people have been afraid of because it is such a multi-generational community, right? But it's so necessary.
So I think fresh eyes, but also which is why districting comes into play and we can talk about that after. But, um, someone that like this is truly affecting them and why districting is so important for this in particular and why I'm really part of why I'm running. But so in that, with, with all these lockdowns, so I was pushing for this fence, speaking at city council meetings, emailing people, school, school, um, district meetings. And then that fence I'd been advocating for, for a whole year, like pushing people. And they kept telling me, no, I actually a guy jumped the fence in the middle of school day, having a mental breakdown. Let me tell you, like, kids were scared, parents are scared, guy having a mental breakdown, kids calling parents scared out of their mind. Um, you know, one of the days that there was lockdown, six kids showed up to my daughter's classroom the next day. I've been having parents asking me, like, should I, you know, new parents, do I want to have my kids at Las Palmas? And that's a shame.
What was, what were the, what were the no's about? Like you said, you kept getting no's about the fence. What was the?
The money. It's money. Um, this, you know, it's just, it's not an urgency. So that happened, this, when the guy jumped the fence last year, this happened on a Tuesday. There happened to be a city council meeting that night. I went and spoke. I called for an urgent meeting with everyone. Um, that Friday I got sheriff's department, school board officials and city council, two city council officials all in a room. So there's like fifteen of us sitting on like little small two, second grade desks, right? And, um, they still, in that meeting, after a guy jumped our fence during school hours, still they were telling me like, this isn't urgent. And I sat there and three hours, I'm like, no, we're, we're here. We're coming up with a solution. You're not telling me. We're waiting a year for a fence because it's going to cost a hundred grand. We're lucky that guy did not have a gun or a knife and that everyone's safe. Um, we came up with a solution. Uh, we had a temporary fence within the, that like two weeks, and then we had permanent fencing within two months. And then happy to say, we also got, um, proper security cameras that go directly to the sheriff's department. And we got proper lighting for our teachers who were scared just to go out to their parking lot at night. Um, and so I feel more secure now sending my kids to Las Palmas, but I also do not feel secure with the rest of our area. I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe sending my kids to school areas of Maxberg Park, down, um, homeless issues that we have down in North Beach. And there's a lot of safety concerns. Um, but in that meeting, um, when we finished.
Well, the fence is a stopgap. I mean, you're, you're not dealing with, with the core reasons, right?
Yeah.
And that's where, what you're talking about. Yeah.
But so in that meeting, when we wrapped up, I felt good. I'm like, okay, we have a solution. Um, Chris Duncan, who was the mayor at the time, running for state assembly, he approached me after, he's like, Angela, would you ever consider running for city council? You'd be so great. Like we need someone like you, a fighter who would like make a difference and get things done. And like, oh, I don't, never thought of something like this, but you know, tell me more. And, um, Chris has been great, kind of just telling me like what, you know, what the job entails and everything and giving me background. Um, and so talked to my husband, he was all for it and here I am today.
Yeah. So, so, so you have a very direct and personal reason for doing this?
Yes.
Yeah. And Chris is a friend, so I could totally hear him saying that to you. And he'll, he'll be on on Wednesday, uh, this week. But yeah, um, you know, it, it, it makes perfect sense because I think, I'm just curious, what was the price tag at the end of the day for that fence? Like what was?
Originally it was over a hundred grand.
Okay.
And I think they went with, and that was for iron rod fencing and they ended up going with something cheaper.
Okay.
Um, and it still looks great and I'm happy with it.
So we're talking about less than a hundred grand.
Yep.
And where did the funding end up coming from? Was it the school district? Okay. So it's a hundred thousand dollars plus or minus.
Yeah.
That you were involved for a long time to get to happen, finally ended up happening. And in a scheme of things, it's nothing.
Yeah, nothing.
Then just, just to, to at least provide comfort and, and a sense of security for the parents and the children.
And think about it.
And focus on the education.
Yeah. And think about it. If they had listened in the first place.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have had kids, that second, that first incident or the third incident, and then kids being scared to go to school. And I'm telling you, there were kids scared and terror, and actually teachers scared. And it's not, that's, that shouldn't happen.
So what's the next step? Should you win? What, what do you want to do to that park?
Hold on a second. I'm not, I'm not done with the school thing. Who was, who was the trustee for, for the area?
Uh, Lisa Davis.
Okay. So the, so did you feel that you're not only impassioned, understandably impassioned position on doing with this, right? But also some of your background in terms of just actually being solution oriented?
Yes.
Finding a way through, coming to a point of consensus, that all of that factored in. And the reason I'm asking that is because sometimes we underestimate the value of that for people running for office. And it becomes, and it's very much a passion, of course, but you need those skills.
Yeah.
You need the ability to lead on a subject.
Yeah. So I, I have a competitor saying like, oh, I answer every email and I'll listen to everything and like, that's my biggest, best quality. And like vote, like those are easy, right? Any receptionist can answer any email. I can answer emails too. Easy. I ran our customer service for eight years before we finally hired my aunt. Anyone can, you know, listen, but not many people can collaborate and get stuff done. And that's what I bring to the table. Like I don't, if, if we want to get something done and I can listen to everyone, I want to come up with good solutions with everyone. But there's a way that we can do that and get it done. And I'm not going to back down until we actually do it. Like if I say I'm going to do something, I'm gonna follow it through until we get it done.
Well, and, and the focus, the local, localized focus via the district thing, I can totally see the benefit. I mean, I told you when, when, before we, we got on the air, it's like, yeah, I'm not sure about this district thing, thing, whatever. No, but I totally get it. Like I see the benefit of that, like, because otherwise, to your point, like this conversation about a hundred thousand dollars on a school district that is the value of what they have in there. I mean, it's just ridiculous to even have this conversation. But, but the fact that it was lost in the larger picture of all the other expenditures. And it wasn't like, and, and you know, it's like, oh, well, this has been an ongoing issue. Oh, well, you know, it's like, but, but yet it took somebody to be locally focused on this specifically by, because of the district situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, if things aren't personal to someone, it's harder for them to get like, to push on it, right? And to advocate and to be like, no, like this needs to happen. And when it's deeply affecting someone, their wellbeing, their family's wellbeing, their friends' wellbeing, and they really understand it and can see an easy solution, like it makes sense. And us for District Three, I don't know, you tell me, you've been in San Clemente longer. I don't know of any city council members that have really lived in North Beach at the time while serving.
No, most, most people, most, most, the, the negative side of, at large is that it tends to be where we lose the ability to attract talent from areas that are not usually traditionally been thought of or funded or what have you. And honestly, I, I've lived enough, I mean, I lived in North Beach, which is, is in your area, right? And then, and then in two thousand, so from eighty-seven to two thousand, we were in North Beach. And, 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 uh, and then we moved to Salvador, which is a different district now, which is also in play, right? And, and I ended, and, and actually for a while I lived off Estrella, right? Right across from the Trader Joe's. So, and was on the historical site for thirteen years. So I get it. I, when, when real estate agents sell San Clemente, they sell it by zones. Right? Riviera, Talega, you know, uh, so we have that individualized sense when it comes to that. We also have a kind of a unified sense because of the downtown area that we have a central identity.
Yep.
Right? Which everybody benefits from, everybody shares. I mean, I remember when, when they were selling Talega, they sold Talega on the fact that it's a historical town using only hands and photos. Right? Of kids on the beach down at, at Calafia. Like you, you're on the outside of it, but there was that, it was dollar and cents benefit to basically have that identity, right? As a brand. So, so I don't know, to answer your question, no, I've never seen anybody. I've seen people engage.
Yeah.
Like on the pier stuff and on the North Beach stuff and you know, that whole thing. But I've never seen necessarily where I could say so and so is representing that area and is sitting on council.
Right. And will still represent all of San Clemente.
Of course, it's unavoidable, I don't think, yeah.
I'm, but those are going to be my voters, right?
Right.
And that is, I think, it's just important to have, but, um, we'll see what happens this year and if it's, you know, if it's the right choice for the city to do this.
How many people are running for the seat?
So there's four. Um, yeah. So I'm one of the four running. Um, but you know, I think also though, that we didn't talk about, you know, in city councils, a lot of people are usually older, retired, you know.
That's another thing about this that I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to because we've had people, and I've done it myself. I've been on boards and I've basically stepped away from boards because I've seen interest from fresher, you know, involvement. And I basically stepped away because it was time for somebody else to basically, you know, get engaged. And so I think sometimes, you know, you, you need that. You need that shakeup. You need that little bit of that, you know, newer blood. Um, not taking away from anybody's service.
Yeah.
Right? Especially people who have committed a lot of time. But no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to that aspect of it. What, 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 what has, what has the experience been like?
Gosh, um, this is the craziest like two months that I've had. Well, so I, I announced back in March or April, I want to say. So I, I went like head down and fundraising, um, which is hard to do, you know, I don't have my own money. I have competitors that are, you know,
Funded.
Putting their own money, you know, there's a loophole where you can loan your, your, um, your campaign money and just never pay it back. Or, you know, your significant other will put in five, the max is five thousand, five hundred dollars. So, you know, there's, there's those issues. I don't have wealthy family members.
How expensive is this coming?
A lot, very expensive. I've fundraised about thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, and a lot of it is small donations. I've have probably close to a hundred of just small donations, but and then I also have endorsements. So, um, I'm proud that I'm endorsed and the only city council candidate to be endorsed by our congressman, Mike Levin, and our OC supervisor, Katrina Foley. And they both came to my fundraiser for me and spoke on, you know, behalf of me, which, you know, like if you follow city politics, it's not normal to have a congressman come to your fundraiser. And that was, um, you know, just me working closely, like doing everything I can in the beginning to set myself up for success because, you know, I may be new to this, but I'm gonna go hard, like I, I'm going headfirst and learning all about it. So first is been fundraising and now it's like go time. Now this is like be everywhere, knock on every door, be at every event, say yes to every interview. So thank you.
And how, and how, and how, you know, you're more than welcome. I, I think it's very important. And, and I've said it before, the reason why I, I've been doing these, was this our third cycle maybe or fourth cycle that we've been doing?
Something like that, yeah.
That is because, is because you guys don't get a chance to really get to be known by just going to these like debates. You get one minute questions and three minute answers or whatever the heck it is.
I wish please someone listening, can we put on a debate and not a forum?
Yeah.
Because I want to debate.
Yeah.
I don't want to like simple forum.
Yeah. But, but.
Forum is like.
You just stand up and identify.
Q and A and meet the candidate, but it's not really where you're delving into the issues.
Yeah.
You're not giving these candidates a chance to actually either show the platform they're on or what they're for. And honestly, pros and cons. And so, you know, people are like, you're gonna do an hour with a candidate? And I'm like, yeah, I want to find out what the person's all about, what makes them tick. Right? Exactly.
So can I ask my earlier question, which is what's the bigger, so you, I know it motivates you to get involved.
Yeah.
The security of your kids at the school. And you were able to accomplish something there, at least get some fencing up. But there's still a core problem at this park that goes back years. What, what do you propose to do about it? Or what do you think should be done about it?
So I would love to see more activities at Maxberg Park. There's no real structured activities. It hasn't been turned into, you know, a soccer field or volleyball, sand volleyball courts, um, things like that, that we could do and actually have structured activities. The more activities you have.
Yeah.
You know, the more people are around that are doing family orientated things and healthy things, you're gonna have less, um, less kids hanging out or people like problems happening because you're gonna deter them.
Right. If it's vacant and nothing's happening in it, then you're basically gonna have a vagrant issue. You're gonna have a drug issue. You're gonna have whatever loud, loitering issue. Yeah. Uh, you know, if, if, if and when you're ready, and if you haven't been already put in touch with, gentleman whose fa, whose father's name is actually on the park is a gentleman by name of Barry Burke. And he lives in, um, uh, like Central Coast now, but he used to be in San Clemente, was very involved in San Clemente, born and raised in San Clemente. And I, he's involved in, um, surfing. And so he knows a lot of people.
Yeah.
And I think what you're talking about may require not only, um, like a programming thing from the Beaches Parks and Rec, for example, but it may require also some incentivization from some of these people that are kind of like almost gatekeepers, whether they're still in town or not. And the guy, I mean, it doesn't get closer to the guy's name on, on, on the thing.
I will take it.
Yeah, I will, I will definitely connect you with, with him. Uh, we had, I remember we had a little memorial for his dad when he passed. Um, and it was actually at the park. And, um, you know, we had a little gathering for it, but the, the, the thing about it is that park has so much potential. Like I said, it's the largest open space in town, so to speak, versus like
Yeah.
The Hermosa Park of, of, you know, this is in town.
Yeah.
And across from a school and in a neighborhood of homes. And yet it's very underutilized.
Underutilized. And so.
Why did they say, others say that they don't utilize it or that it's sort of overlooked or forgotten or maybe abandoned's a hard word, but nobody does much there. And so therefore it's, it feels kind of abandoned and the wrong elements move in there because nobody's watching and nobody else is using it here. What do other people in town say? What is stopping it from being used? Money again?
I just don't think anyone's cared to push it forward. Honestly, it just takes someone to care. I mean, it was the same thing with the fence. I mean, it was like so simple. And as I'm advocating for it and people are like, oh, that's always bothered me. I mean, it was like so simple. And as I'm advocating for it and people are like, oh, that's always bothered me. Well, it's just take someone that cares. Push it forward and like.
There's four historical fountains in that park. Okay, those little octagonal ball bouts that are, those are fountains. Those were put in by Ole Hanson. Okay, when they did that park, they centered the park with the large plaza driveway up to it and put in the church. There's a lot of. History and uniqueness to that park that adds not only value to it as a park, but it also adds value to that neighborhood. But it's been lost kind of. And then at the end of that road, used to be the old Chamber of Commerce building. Which is now basically another tenant, I think, is going in.
Yeah, which would be great to have a substation for the police. Something like that to where we can have our, you know, a substation where, you know, they're close ba- by, they're in town. We have. You know, we're working on this stuff. And additionally, I know.
But we don't have our own police, so that now it's.
But we need a substation for um, you know. There, close by, um because we have a park ranger, new park ranger program that we could use and that helps. It helps deter. Um additionally, um again, and this comes to someone just pushing, we voted on having more sheriffs, right? We have it in our budget. I believe we have four, two to four sheriffs on budget. And we've asked for these sheriffs. We're we've all voted for it or the city council have. But we haven't gotten them. It's been like over two years, right? Why? Because the sheriff said they don't have them. They don't have enough. They're being relocated somewhere else. Well, again, it takes, you know, someone to just. Of like, okay, who's gonna really push? And I will tell you, I'm that annoying person. It's like not gonna go away until we get it. And figuring out, okay, well, what's the solution? How are we gonna work together? Because it needs to be. The park ranger program is great. Private security has done its job with homeless down in North Beach, but. Um, in the end, we want, we want sheriffs, we want deputies um as well. And we've. Agreed on it. We voted on it. So let's let's get what we're asking for.
So let me let me let me share something with you, which is which is interesting about this. It's just gonna hit me. Okay, St. Clemente, when I'm when when I moved in there and I got involved and I would I would say things like, you know, it's it's the right size. It's small enough, but it's big enough. Is almost hyperly engaged at the city council. I can only imagine when it was state citywide and everybody was hyper engaged. And then we kind of lost a little bit of that like um momentum, right? More recently, but I think what's gonna happen out of this, if I had to predict, is I think because of the localized focus. I think you're gonna start having more engagement of that level. And honestly, St. Clemente from as long as I remember. Has always been a grassroots effort. It's always been sort of like, you know, um. Local driven things, right? And so I think this may actually be another like booster shot in the arm for us. Where we are now basically gonna re-energize these conversations based on localized, literally district localized conversations. Because because North Beach got lost in the shuffle. You know, when you, you know, forever and ever. Um, I think this particular situation, again, its proximity to the freeway is part of the problem. But the fact that it's buried a little couple of streets back is also part of the problem because it's kind of not in on everybody's radar. And it needs somebody like you to basically do this. How was the reaction been from the neighborhood? I mean, the school thing was very focused, right? How's the reaction been now that you're running and knocking on doors?
I mean, really great, I think. I mean, like you said, like grassroots efforts. I've been meeting some amazing people who have lived in St. Clemente for. You know, thirty, forty, fifty years that have lived in their homes around Maxburg Park and in in North Beach. Um, that are really excited to have someone represent them and understand the same challenges that they have. Also to see young blood, I think, you know, um. Having a young mom and someone who's in all the family activities, you know, I'm at the beach every weekend. I'm at the soccer fields every weekend. I'm embedded in the family activities. It's not like. You're gonna see me out and about and I'm living it ba- base and not just. But I mean, public safety is just one of my, you know, priorities. Obviously, like, that's my why. That's how I got into it. Um, but another priority is obviously sand on the beach. It's what everyone's been talking about. Um, and I want sand, like I wanna make sure that we have sand on our beaches for a long time and whether or not our sand tax. Passes. Um, it's still not gonna be enough money for us to um have, keep getting sand on our beaches. So. Um, I've already been talking to Katrina's Foley's office on getting. Um, you know, working with them on grants and she's hired a full time person just to work on grants. And I'm excited to work with her just on.
The harbor should be funding our sand, by the way. I'm just, I'm putting it out.
What about the uh train issue? That's the only one I hear about.
Oh, there was a discussion, yeah, about the tracks and the potential of widening.
That's gonna be well down the road of moving the train and I mean, they've, they're not putting more boulders. So we've gotten them to agree on that. Yeah, and the boulders are are making it worse. So um, yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't think the train is going anywhere.
But that's.
But they're struggling to keep it up and running.
At one point, there was a discussion that was derail, derail, basically in St. Clemente, for those who don't have the history. And this is some of these guard, the old guard that were involved in everything, you know, um uh they were gonna do a double track. Be a double track on the beach. So when you're looking at a single track. The reason why there is no double track on that beach is because the people in St. Clemente mobilize and they derail, derail. There were stickers that basically said. Derail, derail. So some of this history, and the reason I'm bringing it up, is the community is has a long history. Of grassroots advocacy. And anybody who's running and maybe newer to the town. You you if maybe not be as easily visible right now than it was maybe ten years ago, fifteen years ago, when I was engaged in a lot of stuff. But, you know, I will tell you, mothers, I know mothers that were involved at Beaches, Parks and Rec. They they served as commissioners forever and ever. You know, that had kids that were born and raised, went to S- San Clemente High, you know, surfed surf trestles. And and the school district as well. I remember back when we had a uh uh. Really kind of scandalous situation with the school district about twenty years ago, maybe. And it was the mothers in St. Clemente. And that basically really pushed. And I'm not gonna name names, but I bet you you know some of them already, right? And they were on all sides of the political aisle, by the way. And they all basically came together because the bottom line was they were focused on the quality of education and the safeguarding the students' futures. And so there's a rich history in South County, especially in St. Clemente, of this sort of grassroots activism. That really was has. Is a result of why we have a lot of stuff that we have right now. Maxburg Park is one of those things that's been lost. But the reason why there's Hermosa and it is the way it is, is because there's a strong engagement from both Beaches, Parks and Rec. And the friends friends of uh Beaches, Parks and Rec. Which I was on the board of.
Where does the old guard live? Who are the, before it was district, where did most of the?
They're actually all over, Paul. It's not, it's not necessarily centralized, but but to Angela's point earlier. It seemed like a lot of people that were running were coming from repetitively similar areas in town. And some of it is the funding, and that's why I asked you about that question.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's expensive and it takes a lot. I mean, it's a lot. This is almost a full time job for me to campaign. It's a lot. And so, but you know, and I have people saying, hey, you can't do this job because you're a working mom. I mean, really?
They're telling you that when you're knocking on their doors, like they're seeing.
My competitor.
Oh, they're competitive. Oh, so you need to be not in not interested in the outcome. I I I think if you're if you're a working mom. And your focus is on stuff like this, like safety and and, you know, school and access and all that stuff. No, I think you're probably the most engaged person motivated to get some results.
Interesting if you can campaign, campaign.
Has St. Clemente suffered from the same thing some of the other South County cities have, which is contentious debates on these city councils? Some of them become very divided and very angry. I'm thinking of like, isn't St. Clement or San Juan Capistrano always. Having arguments and fights and anger and all.
No, from my perspective, we went through a period of that. But I think it was driven by exterior uh external uh special interests. That were trying to basically position people on council that basically would then simplify and. And and facilitate things like. I'm talking about like development. I mean, you know, we've always, we've always been very protective, St. Clemente, of our identity and DNA and. Some people, as property values have, you know, kind of squeezed us from north and south, all of a sudden, we're like, oh, this is a little unique little place that, you know. I should be able to do what I want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I've taken no money from developers. I mean, I'm I'm not anti-development. I think that there has to be some sort of development. Affordable housing, things like that. But in a like very special way, it's why, you know, we live in St. Clemente. It's such a special place. I love being able to walk everywhere and see everyone. Like, I don't want it to be, I definitely don't, no offense to anyone that lives in Newport. Don't want it to be, you know, a Newport. I want it to be like our special St. Clemente. Like his, you know, it has a very historical meaning to it and I I love that about it and I don't want it to change. But um, go ahead.
Well, no, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, you're running, so I'm not gonna get you in trouble. And I'll probably get myself in trouble because I'll probably end up with some city people running for city council in some of these places that I'm gonna mention right now. And they're gonna probably hold me, hold my feet to the fire. But I will say this, just in terms of historical reference. I have been at a lot of city council member meetings enough to basically be able to take the roster and before the meeting starts, tell you how people are gonna vote in advance. Right? Which is good and bad. But. We would come up, the people would show up. And I get the, it's my property. I wanna do what I wanna do. But if you're buying into St. Clemente. Here's the, here's your choices. You're gonna spend the next ten years trying to fight an uphill battle on something in a very engaged community that is now going to about to be at re-engaged. And not make be making money on your development, or you can actually do an appropriate and sensitive solution proposal. And be in the ground and out the ground and making money within five. So your question, the question is, is your ego worth the five years of lost revenue? Or not? I mean, I mean, I'm gonna be very blatant about it. I've seen it happen over and over and over and over again, and it will continue to happen. If you're buying into St. Clemente, you're buying in to something that has a value. Respect that value when you're proposing a solution and we in St. Clemente deserve a unique solution. Don't come back and repackage something that you did in Huntington Beach or you did in Newport Beach and try to sell it to us. Because we have a strong enough pride in our identity that we're gonna say no to you and then it's gonna be an uphill battle. Do you wanna make money in five or do you wanna spend ten years trying to get there?
I mean, you don't wanna be just dis- you know, just make it all look the same, every every beach.
No, they're buying into St. Clemente because of the uniqueness that we fought for years and years to maintain. So. How foolish can you be? And I'm telling you this from a commercial design person. We get paid money to build things that look, they've been around there for hundreds of years in order for people to come and spend a top dollar being there. So why would you take something that's been around since nineteen twenty five, which is a rare thing? We have over two hundred properties in St. Clemente that date back to that period. And then this die completely obliterate that uniqueness. Which you're getting for free, basically.
A hundred percent. Well, and just know, I think it's important. And everyone listening and I, cause I know we're, we don't have much time, is that. Like, it's important who you who you are gonna vote for and like they're, who they're taking money from, what their political. Um, you know, why they're, why they're running and what they're, you know, are they doing this for a political stepping stone? And I just wanna say. I'm very open, honest, and like you see what you get. I don't have any, um, I don't owe anyone any favors. I don't have friends on like planning commission. I don't like, I'm not involved in the political scene here. And so I'm doing it really to serve and to keep St. Clemente special. So when I'm, you know, my kids are growing up. And when I'm raising my family here, that they're staying safe and that, you know. I can enjoy St. Clemente with my family and my friends can too. And to support our small businesses because I love, you know, as a small business owner here, I know what it is, what it's like to have a small business and survive.
So let me ask you one other question that I love to ask all local politicians. Local used to be local, right? We're running to because of what's happening in the school or the park or the potholes or or something here. It was it was motivated by that. So much of this national crazy conversation has sifted down. That we're talking now about transgender rights or or Sharia law or other sorts of things. I see over overnight. Over again, getting imposed in these locals just abortion and stuff. And it's like, what does that have to do with the local city council election? They have no power to implement or do any.
Are you facing any of that while you're running? Like that, some of that larger picture?
I mean, St. Clemente, they try to make a no block who's on our current council now. We tried to get it to be a pro life. Um, and so, yeah, it's being brought up. I mean, they were trying to, on the agenda for tomorrow, supposed to be about like voter ID. They had put. I I just heard that they were taking it off the agenda, but again, no block and Gabrielle like signed it in to bring it to the the city. It's like. This stuff doesn't belong in city politics, right?
I wouldn't think so. Being pulled down. I hear so many elections from Huntington Beach on uh where they're taking the national and they're bringing it down.
Political agenda.
Exactly. There here's the thing. Also, the people that are advocating for stuff like that, in some cases, I'm not talking about Steve maybe having this or not, but. In some cases, there is other larger than St. Clemente eyes on it or interests in it. So sometimes it's almost like. I did my duty by putting this on the on 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 the on the roster or or I'm pushing this because of a bigger picture. But here's the thing about communities like St. Clemente, and I don't know about where you are, Paul, because I don't know if you're even, are you incorporated at this point or not?
Uh, no, I'm an unincorporated.
See, there you go. So you're not even incorporated. But I think I think I think in communities like St. Clemente, okay? The community is engaged. It's engaged. I mean, when when we say we've had standing room only and people outside in the parking lot. At city council meetings. This is happening and not once in a while. It happens a lot when the community is engaged in St. Clemente. So. You, we have a bit of, you know, at least what the community wants. And when something like this comes, I'm not surprised that they pulled it. They knew it was gonna be bad for them. And especially this close to the elections. So so stupid move to begin with, but you know, I'm not surprised that they pulled it. So so I know we're almost out of time. Uh, what else do you, what else is on your on your agenda or on your platform? Like, what are some of your focuses that we haven't touched on, if anything?
Or anything else you'd like to.
You let people know.
No, I mean, I think we we covered it. Public safety, you know, protecting our coastal heritage and making sure that we have that for for. You know, many, many years to come. And then protecting our small family owned beaches. I mean, small family owned businesses. I wanna ensure that people that live in St. Clemente. Own a business in St. Clemente can afford to. In St. Clemente. You know, like, how special is that that like, we can have people that actually live in St. Clemente be able to have a business here too. And I think it's special.
So I think I think I think you touched on something. We touched on it with John Stevens and I wanna bring it up here because it's it's something right now that's on my focus too. Is gentleman who co-hosts the show with me sometime, Pascal Olatz, who's a chef. He's in the service. He's been around forever since nineteen eighty five. He actually was very instrumental in fine dining becoming a thing in Orange County, right? And he basically said it, and I will repeat it, he's not here. He said that you need to be able to have people that can work in those industries. That don't have to commute two hours in order to do that, right? And and so when when we talk about cost of living, it's one aspect. When biggest item in the cost of living in Orange County is housing. Right?
I've lived it.
And yet every time we say the word affordable housing.
People cringe.
People cringe and not in my backyard, right? And St. Clemente had one of those issues. And and we built a very nice Spanish revival element near downtown that basically made made that so. I would encourage you to maybe, and I, this is my feeling, is I think the language gets in the way. I think when we say affordable housing.
Like homeless and people who aren't contributing to society when in fact it's like. It's me, like I am, I am someone who at one point really needed affordable housing to live here. And I'm just lucky that, you know, when I owned a small business, yes, we would have been a per- like a family that needed affordable.
You could call it business supporting housing. You can call it workforce housing, although that has a little bit of a negative connotation. You can call it proximity housing. Because I mean, especially after COVID, you have a lot of people that basically are not necessarily commuting. But they're basically living, they wanna live in a place where they have a quality of life. And I will tell you, this is this is something that that's come on my radar. It's a little. In my book, a little bit sinister in a way. There are people that actually believe that if you're not working hard enough to afford to live in a certain place. Then that's just fine. Like somehow, your inability to afford to live in Orange County is somehow due to the. Your lack of energy and 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 motivation, right? And I'm I'm just putting it out there because that's just, that's just. And I'm, I'm just putting it out there because that's just, that's just ridiculous thinking.
Let me tell you a story. So.
Does that apply to their kids? Does that apply to their grand, to their, to their parents who are older, who also are having financial realities? On both ends of the square. Like, we gotta come up with a holistic solution here.
Yes. And let me, I just, like, I, as someone, we bought our first home, right? Our budget was a million dollars. Crazy, right? To anywhere else in the country. That is insane. A million dollars, but that is like bare minimum. But you know what happened? Uh, we were putting down offers for a million dollars all over San Clemente. We were getting outbid by investors, cash investors, by three hundred thousand dollars, then taking those homes, flipping them. And then they're now, they're renting them for seven thousand dollars. That's not an affordable, like, that is not, that, we can't keep doing that.
And where's the leadership on that issue? It's not. It's just, it's, it's like.
They're not living it. They don't understand it and they don't care.
So here's what I gotta tell anybody who basically is that, and there's certain people I will not name that I've heard say things like this crazy stuff, right? At housing conferences, okay? Here's the deal. It's not just this sort of workforce, whatever you wanna think about it, okay? It's your kids that are born and raised in those communities that now are gonna be a loss to that community. Where they are basically vested in the community, you're literally allowing them to have to leave because they can't afford to stay there. Also, the older people, the senior people that maybe basically have not saved enough, but are holding on to their homes because it's their last biggie bank, right? And so their house doesn't go into inventory, so we have a lack of housing inventory. We have a lack of appropriate solutions for seniors to be able to scale down but stay within their familiar environments. So what are their options? I'm gonna sell you my house that I bought at half a million, that's now worth two, right? Because the only, and then the only thing I can do is actually leave the state or leave the county. So leave my familiar environment when I basically, this show, this show started, Paul will tell you, this show started where we were focusing on baby boomer issues. We're talking about stuff that basically nobody wants to talk about, end of life, medical directives, all this stuff, right? Because I thought, hey, I'm gonna empower myself for when my parents are older, I'll be already, right? Which of course, you never are. But here we are, finding ourselves in a conversation about affordable housing. And I only use that term because it's the common term, but it's not limited to people that are, you know, down on their luck. Or have limited means. I mean, I think, what is it, like a hundred and?
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year.
Qualifies you for, for aid in Orange County. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, you qualify, right? And so, so when we don't deal with this housing situation holistically, don't give me more single-family homes. When the you, younger people are not buying into getting married and having a family early on necessarily, they're delaying it. They're trying to avoid maybe afford, uh, the hidden costs of insurance. Insurance is another problem we're dealing with right now. So let's come up with holistic solutions that are sustainable, that are malleable, that can be adjusted. But we're not just dealing with this workforce situation. We're dealing with youth in the communities that are now basically being told to leave because they can't afford to start their lives. We're dealing with seniors. And here's the deal. The largest growing voter block are young people that are registering to vote and seniors that are very engaged and active. So anybody running for office, don't, you really wanna piss these people off because you're doing that when you're not solving this housing problem? I appreciate you being here. Paul, Paul is gonna probably kick me out here in any minute.
How do they reach you?
How do you really reach you? How do they find out about the campaign?
Go to www dot vote Angela Watts dot com. So just easy, vote Angela Watts dot com. You can find me also.
That's W A T T S?
Yep, W A T T S. Just Google Angela Watts, San Clemente, and it'll come up too.
You volunteer, donate, help, uh, let your votes be heard. Register to vote.
Do they do any polling at local levels? I mean, do you have any idea where you stand at this point in time?
It's a close race. It's gonna be close. So, um, all the help and support. If you liked what you heard today, please go, come, we, we have days of, um, action on the weekends. And, um, we'll have Katrina Foley with us on one of the days of action. So please come, um, come volunteer, come knock on doors and, um, or yeah, donate, contribute, help us with our digital ads and mailers that we have going out.
Get to know your candidates, really. Get to know the candidate. Don't just look at the soundbites and the little, you know, testimonial captions. Get to know your candidates. These are, these are people that are gonna, that represent you, represent your interest. They put in the time, energy and effort to actually be there, looking out for your best interests when you are not able to.
Well, you know, she proved me wrong. This isn't just the same old stuff I usually hear over and over again. So if nothing else, it's a fresh voice and a fresh perspective for a new district that's, uh, being focused on. As, I, I'm curious, I think we're all curious to see how this redistricting, uh, districting idea works. Cause many people fought it, many of these cities fought it, and the argument was, then you're just representing that little tiny part, slice of the community and not the rest of the community. But too often, these communities were run by a handful of older people who'd been there forever and now kind of lived in the same area and looked out for the same things, and too many parts of the community were overlooked.
Well, I'm not too proud to say I'm a convert after this conversation because that's not where my head was and has been for a while. Seriously.
Yeah, fresh perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think this is what I mean by meet your candidate. Like, if I was just looking at Angela's, you know, website, or just basically looking at some soundbites or going into these little forums and getting like, you know, the benefit of two minutes of her time, right? I would not have gotten the reason and I, and nobody can sit in front of somebody for an hour and be basically blowing smoke, okay? It's very clear when you sit down and talk and have a conversation with somebody, where they're coming from and why. And so I appreciate you being here and letting me, you know, letting us know. I will put the word out to anybody who's also running in that district that wants to be on, you know, you better get to us fast because we got spots, but they fill up. Uh, but it's really important that you do get to know the people who represent.
Cause that's why you're just flipping a coin or you're going, I don't care, whatever, incumbent or whatever here, you just pick whatever.
You don't vote, you don't get to whine after. Okay, so red, make sure, make your, make sure your registration is, is accurate, that you're, you're, you're not gonna be basically finding a surprise. Yes, yes, yes. It's still time to register, but go check your registration. I'll get the website, we'll, we'll give it next time. But go check your registration and make sure it's accurate, make sure you're va, you know, it's valid, make sure you know where you can go vote, if you're not voting by mail. You know, I got my ballot thing the other day.
Do you get people when you're knocking the door, say, you're the first one that's ever been here, or? Or the opposite that say, I don't care. I don't care.
No, I've gotten a lot of people saying like, hey, people don't knock on doors like they used to and they just assume they're gonna win. But I honestly, I think my district, because I, like, I think we're all starting to knock. I mean, I think everyone is. So, I mean, it's, because it's gonna be a tight race, everyone within, all four of us are working hard. So I think it's great, you know, great for democracy, let the people.
And, and, and I can't, I can't see anybody arguing against what you're saying. No, we don't wanna fix the park. No, we don't wanna do these things.
I think that a lot of people, we all similarly, for the most part, you know, want similar things. It's believing on who you think can actually deliver and follow through and who you want representing you.
I think, I think most people also, when it comes to stuff like this, Paul, to your point, is their resistance may be from, it's usually the case, from lack of knowledge. For not really knowing enough to make it, to make it, you know, a judgment call on something. And let's face it, the first thing that comes to mind is, is this gonna increase my taxes? So I basically, in order for it to happen. So that it's a financial situation, right? For I should question. But the reason why I emphasize the thing about the fence, is this was a hundred thousand dollar solution. For, for a school district that has millions of, of yearly budget. And yet the school is a prominent school, the oldest school in San Clemente, across from a prominent park, in a neighborhood that's residential. And it still required somebody to have a very localized focus on the situation and leadership to lead people that would have easily put it on the back burner. In a bigger picture, we got bigger problem.
Apparently, it's been on the back burner for a long time.
So thank you for doing that.
Yes, of course, happy to.
And thanks, everybody, for joining us.
Website one last time.
W W W dot vote Angela Watts dot com.
Okay, thanks for joining us. Sure you do.